What you see is what you get, so it's gonna be a lot of fun. And I hope you come along for the ride and have fun with me. God bless, and my name is John Sullivan, and I approve this message. Well, hi guys. First thing you do is you buckle up, click. My name is John Sullivan. I'm running for city council in this wonderful city of Sierra Vista, Arizona. I'm very well qualified to do this. It's not really about the campaign. I'm gonna run a campaign like you've never seen a campaign run before in Sierra Vista, or anywhere else, for that matter. But I think I'm gonna win, because I was in the Navy for 20 years. I had that type of clearance that you have up on Wachukah for the highest classification stuff for 20 years. I was on three Navy ships overseas 11 years, flew on EP3s for four years. The first thing I learned is, you gotta know what you're doing. You gotta dive in there and get to the bottom of the basics, you know? Learn how things are as they became as they are. And then go make the necessary changes to adapt to changes in society, or conditions around you, that kind of thing. So, that having been said, the qualifications are there. There's a lot of similarities between doing things I did in the Navy, and things I did in the television and movie production business, which I did actually in the Navy since 1996. I retired in 2003. So there was a big overlap there. I know the media inside and out, as a matter of fact, back in the early 90s, I was a public affairs officer as one of my collateral duties for the command I was in in Florida. I'll never forget the day I had a friend that was a real big Dawkins fan, so I said, "Well, let's go do an interview with Dawkins." I mean, I really am the kind of like the golden rolodex, as far as knowing people and connections and stuff. And that really was something that will really make me effective in working with the state, with the feds, and with the county. And hopefully even with Sonora, I'd really like to open up avenues to talk to them directly, and I understand they're already doing that. I'd like to really explore the possibilities there. I really see in my lifetime that Sonora's gonna be... We're gonna have the southern wall on the south side of Sonora. They are far more like Cochise County, or Phoenix, or god forbid Tucson, than Mexico City. So there's all these cartels and hoodlums running the place down there, de facto. Figurehead government, EPN down there in Mexico City. Honestly, this Claudia down there in Sonora is just a fantastic governor. And I really see possibilities there of really interconnecting the two sides of the borders in ways that's never done before. In ways that'll help both Aguafrieta and Sierra Vista, Douglas, Wilcox, Benson, Bisbee, and all the, not secondary towns, but smaller towns, El Frida, that kind of thing in between. Wachukah City, Hefner, Palomitas. One of the things I really wanna stress to you guys is, I'm not gonna make this a personal campaign, no matter how it goes. There's already... I was really... One of my strong points was, there's nobody here from the West End running, but it turns out there is. There's a wonderful young lady named Carolyn Umphreys... I think she spells it Umphreys, or it's pronounced as Umphreys, U-M-P-H-R-E-Y-S. It's like Humphreys without the H. And I really wanna meet with her, just kinda trade ideas, and I pretty much endorsed her. I really want everybody who thinks they're talented and has the willpower to actually dedicate themselves to the job to run. Like I said, I know all five city members of the city council, including the mayor, very well. I have no personal problems with them. But what you see as you drive up and down Frye is, there's just an awful lot of empty buildings, and these stupid banners they put up, or not. I just don't see the purpose in them. They took down the American flags that were on those flagpoles when I first moved here. And they... I don't know why they did this, because... And they come up with this new... They call it a trademark, or I don't know what they call it, the slogan, or... I don't even wanna quote it, because I don't like it, I hate it that much. But they do things like that that do not really improve the self-esteem of the people living here. What improves the self-esteem of the people living here is higher-paying jobs, more higher-paying jobs, a wider awareness around the country and around the world of just what an awesome place this is, which is one of the sticking points I've had. It's really being undersold. And of course, the more people you have working, the happier the consumers are, the happier the business owners are, the more money everybody's making, the higher wages people will have, the better jobs that will be available, the more competition for jobs instead of that awesome place out there on the northeast part of town, that seems to be where everybody seems to be working for a couple weeks here or there. I love those guys. I gave it a spin with them too. Really great people, but there's a parent company out of France, I think, that owns them, and, you know, minimum wage, there's no way to make a living down here. So right now, like I said, I have a lot of pride in Sierra Vista, I always have. One thing I've noticed about the city, I don't know if this is by law, by ordinance, or by accident, they don't talk about anything outside of the city limits as being part of what's here. But actually, everything around here is part of Sierra Vista. The wonderful, wonderful scenery, the quick access to areas outside of city limits that are really, really hot tourist destinations, if you wanted to be. We don't talk about the pristine air, the affordable prices for utilities, water, heat, and stuff like that. If you don't believe me, go to Tucson or places like that, and you're gonna pay at least twice as much for the same kilowatt hour. So we really have all the best of the world, all the best of all worlds down here, either if you're working or retired, rich or poor. There's just so many things to brag about, that are things that we really need to emphasize, not only for our own self-esteem within, but actually just to tell the truth about how awesome this place is around the world. So when businesses are considering moving, or expanding, or opening, what they'll do is they'll take a look at this great place and say, "Wow, pristine air, very quick access to the Coronado National Forest, very quick access to those who are into that kind of thing, to the San Pedro River to watch birds, just a wonderful, a wonderful part on the backside of the Wachukahs, between Coronado National Monument and Parker Canyon Lake, that nobody ever talks about." That would really be awesome if we could just not only accentuate the good things within this city, but also, you know, talk about what else is available around here. One of the biggest complaints I hear about Sierra Vista is that there's nothing to do here. Well, ladies and gentlemen, that is just an absurd lie. There's plenty of things to do here, and it's not just making your own fun. It's just a wonderful place to be. And so what I wanna do is serve on the city council. Now, first of all, I wanna say something very clear here. City council is misnamed. It's not council, C-O-U-N-C-I-L. It's council as in C-O-U-N-S-E-L. That's what it really is. We have professionals and their staff already in place, you know, city management, city administrators, city staff, key people who know what they're doing, they've been doing it for years. They're the subject matter experts in how, you know, how things are as far as standard operating procedures, and that kind of thing. You know, the legal staff is there to guide people if they go astray, as far as policies and things like that, or what works with the state senate, or the county government, that kind of thing, or federal regulations. There are experts that know what they're doing. Those people are the ones that actually, on a day-to-day basis, actually are in charge of the city. Make no mistake about it, anybody who thinks they're gonna go in there and become a city council member and start telling the city what to do, that's not how it works. My job would be to get in there, really dive in deep and explore how things became how they are. I really, really am a stickler for... When I was in the Navy, I used to make people sick, because I could quote a naval regulation, NAVOP, you know, whatever, or naval instruction, whatever, or any kind of... I mean, I knew the regulations inside and out, and believe me, they were not written for the uneducated. Some of them were actually very detailed, very complex, and I've actually had a role in writing a lot of them on the Personnel Policy Plan side. And so I really, really am a stickler for getting in there, and not only saying, "Well, we have to follow the law", but if an ordinance just doesn't make sense anymore, or there was some kind of shady motivation behind its development, I mean, I don't know. So, not only... It's like going back and studying the Constitution. You really can't just study the Constitution. You have to really get in there and also study the founding fathers, the founding documents. Those are the papers that kind of gave you an inside look into the mind of what was going on to the people who drafted the Constitution, and what their motivations were, and what their ideas were, and what their philosophies were. And that really is exactly what needs to be done with these ordinances here. Not only look at the ordinances on the book, you know, no temporary structures in city parks, that kind of thing. No parking, or no loitering, you know, all these different instructions you see around town, wasting a lot of, you know, ink and metal and paint doing that kind of thing. That's fine. Go find out who... You know, what it was. Was it a neighborhood that complained? Was it something that was directed by state or county government that is actually duplicating something that's already out there that we don't need to proclaim ourselves as law? There's all sorts of things we can do as city council members, instead of giving direction to the day-to-day existing government, but maybe to give direction to the future of Sierra Vista. So one of the things I really think we really need to do is just dive in deep, figure out how we got here, you know, go by the council of those who actually were here when all that stuff happened, and we figured out how all this came into being. The goal is this, simply this: Sierra Vista, Arizona, needs to be the, the premier tourist attraction in all of Arizona. People who want to move businesses down here need to realize that they can. There's not gonna be a lot of bureaucratic interference, or, you know... The kind of stuff you have to go through to open up a business in Tucson, I can tell you, is just astounding. It's just a quagmire of deterrence, that nobody in their right mind wants to open up a business in Tucson, because it's just so much hassle to do so, and it shouldn't be that way. If there are impediments to easy opening of new commercial enterprises here in Sierra Vista, we need to get to the bottom of that and nip that one in the bud. And so here we are, heading down on foothills. The city does not maintain State Road 92, and as everybody knows, State Road 92 has a big mess on the southbound lanes. That's all A dot, but one thing we do need to do is use some of the skills that I have in connecting very well with the state legislature, state senators, state officials. I know all these guys, guys. I mean, I do. Honest to God, I mean, I don't wanna brag, but the governor, this governor's not one of my Twitter friends, but we got just about everybody who's anybody in Arizona politics follows me on Twitter, on my personal account. And for good reason, they're not gonna follow me on the campaign account, which is Sullivan4, the number 4, S. There's supposed to be Sullivan4SV, but somehow that got truncated, but it's Sullivan4S on Twitter. There is a Facebook page, I'm having issues with it, and we're gonna get that fixed, and we'll get that back out there for you. I'm not accepting donations. Like I said, I know the media inside and out. The opinion of the Sierra Vista Herald means absolutely nothing to me. They can do all the hit pieces on me they want, if they wanna interview me and bring me in, and misquote me, that's fine. I mean, honest to God, I'm open to anybody that wants to talk to me about anything. Honestly, you guys know I go to St. Andrew's Church weekly, never miss it. I am divorced, which gives me a lot of time. I don't have any kids in the house, which gives me a lot of time. I do have some health issues related to cancer I had two years ago, just a slow recovery. So there are some dates better than others. And I have applied for disability, and that has been approved. So even though I can't work a full-time part, a full-time 40-hour job, I can do the time and legwork necessary, as available, to run and successfully operate as city council. It's just something I need to do. You just can't sit around the house all day and just wait for disability check to come in. You have to stay busy. And so I said, "Well, let's just go out and do something to get back." Now, the second thing you wanna know is, I'm not accepting donations. If you wanna donate to my targeted pet charity, that's fine, it's the Huntington's Disease Society of America, and a specific Southern Arizona chapter, it's called Team Moore, run by Evelyn Garcia. So anything you wanna get to the campaign will not come to me at all, and I won't be using it for campaign purposes. You can just donate directly to her, if you wanna just give something. I've already hung up on several lobbyists, believe it or not. It is ramen, good stuff. I love all the stuff in Japan, but actually I'm drinking instant coffee. The other thing I'm not gonna do, since I am a Navy retiring, is I'm not accepting salary for this job. First of all, I don't wanna interfere with, you know, getting a little bit of money for the city council and ruining whatever I can get for disability, so I wanna deflect all that money out to the charity as well. So all the earnings, if any, from city council will be 100% donated to charity. We'll try to figure out how that works with taxes later on. But yeah, this is just because I love, love, love this city, you guys just know it. If you've watched any of my stuff since I've been here, there's a very good reason I moved from Pensacola, Florida, in Navy retirement, to Clearwater, Florida, to Tucson, to Marana, and I finally found my niche down here, I found my groove, and where I really wanna be, and that would be right here in Sierra Vista, Arizona, United States of America. And so, welcome to paradise. One of the things you never see very much, except for maybe in the, you know, the fake mountain signs, is the rural mountains here. And, you know, Carr Canyon, I think there's ways to work with the Forest Service, instead of worrying... Instead of doing the silly stuff like trying to make Chiricahua a national monument, a national park, I mean, that's not gonna change anything. It's still gonna be a two-lane crappy road going out there from a long ways from my tin, limited parking. What's the point? But Carr Canyon, you can turn that place, if you talk to the right people, and arm wrestle the right people. You can turn Carr Canyon into the next Mountain Lemon, you know, widen it a little bit through Department of Interior, Department of Agriculture, whoever is in charge up there right now, of the national forest system. Get that thing paved, widened, you can put infinite grounds up there. You would not believe the economic potential for the city of Sierra Vista. And there's nothing near Chiricahua, but yeah, there's... I mean, Carr Canyon's right there. It's just a hop, skip, and a jump out of Sierra Vista. So why not? Why not work to improve the East Montezuma Road and West Montezuma Road? That's not something that Sierra Vista is responsible for, but it is something very much within our power to have influence over, since we are the predominant power down here as far as local government. We have to get involved in not only what's going on in the potholes on 7th Street, but also what's going around us in the bigger macro picture. And that's where I come in, because I am the golden rolodex. I can get something done just by a phone call, that, you know, you don't have to hire lobbyists and, you know, run the normal process that people run. Which is, while you're not gonna ever see a campaign like mine, I've already told you, I love Rick Mueller, but obviously, it's just not working with him. Just too much unemployment, that you really can't contribute to the downturn of the economy. For some reason, the booming Trump economy has passed over Sierra Vista for the most part. There are several reasons for that, I understand them all. But one thing that really, really, really I wanna push is to get smart, like San Diego did. Because right now, the plan is, Fort Wachukah is our parachute. We're down here dangling, they're our parachute, and so far, the ripcord has not ripped, and so we're okay, we're coming down just fine, but still coming down. The problem with that is, there's something called BRAC, which is the Base Regime of Enclosure. And this is supposedly uninvolved people who get together and decide what to do with military bases to meet the current needs of the United States taxpayer and the resulting military that protects them. And as a person who has worked budgets fiscal year, fiscal year, fiscal year from '83 to 2003, I know all about this BRAC process. What I don't like, and I have seen it several places I've lived, is where one of two things happen. The locals hate the military, but they love the pork, that's one thing. And the other thing is, they build their economy with such over-reliance on the federal pork, that if... It's nice to have them in town, and have the Veterans Day parades and stuff like that. But if a BRAC does happen, and for some reason, missions, or tenant commands, or even whole bases are closed, like Riverside, who would've ever thought Riverside, California, would close? Norton Air Force Base, but it did. It happens. So, I really can't speak to the Riverside area after Norton closed, but I can tell you, I mean, Temecula and all those towns did okay, but the one that really did it right was San Diego. And the reason I say that is, San Diego, they did lose their Recruit Training Center down there, and so did Orlando. And both of them, Orlando really suffered when the Navy kinda shut down in Orlando. They really, really suffered. That whole area that used to be the NTC, RTC area, kinda turned into a ghost town, and it was really sad to watch. That's what will happen to all of Sierra Vista if Fort Wachukah were to, god forbid, close. We need to work very hard to prevent that. That's why, with no authority to do so from the city, or commission, or anybody who is in charge, I have taken it by myself here from day one to do what I did in Florida, to be a force multiplier for the existing city of... People who are responsible for tourism bureaus, or to be a force multiplier for the Sierra Vista Chamber of Commerce. Because I just feel so strongly in this place, that why not? Why not talk about how great this place is, brag about how great this place is? You know, you don't need permission, if you're a Kansas City Chiefs fan, to talk about how awesome the Chiefs are. You don't. You just go out there and tell the world, "Hey, these guys are great, and here's why." That's how you do it. If you really love something, don't wait for somebody to pay you to say it, really. The other thing is, you need to know about me, is I never, ever, ever get personal. I really don't. People think I get snarky sometimes. It's not about the people, it's about the politics. I love people. Sometimes it's just a misunderstanding, or somebody has a bad day. I'm very good with people, I always have been. When you deal with some people, you know, on cramped conditions on a ship for six months, you learn how to deal with people and their mood swings and their issues. Believe me. So, especially if you're in charge of developing them, or leading them, or that kind of thing. So you have to understand who your people are, and what makes them tick. And so, that's why I say, people always have a really easy time communicating with me, because I'm just so honest, and the joke is, honest to God, and this is true, is somebody asked me last week in an interview, "John, how would you best describe yourself?" And I said, "Somewhere between Forrest Gump and Mr. Rogers." That's honest to God who I am. Anybody who knows me personally will tell you, "Yeah, that's right." He knows, he's met two popes, he's got letters signed by five presidents, he's met several of them. He's met all these different celebrities in Hollywood, he's got people on Facebook who are famous singers, and that kind of thing. It's true, I got an astronaut on Facebook, who would've thought? And I've met her several times, and she's great. So it's like, I know people, but it's just because I'm Forrest Gump. It's not because of anything I am, it's just, oh, I ran into him. But in the meantime, one thing that these famous people always knew about me, which is why several of them are following back on Twitter, and have met me, and have talked with me, and have my phone number, have called me, is they know that I do not appreciate them for their position. Because if, let's say, I'll throw out one, because it doesn't matter, because he's gonna go to NASA anyway to be their budget administrator. Jeff DeWitt up in Florida, I'm sorry, up in Phoenix, has been our state treasurer, almost since I've been here. And he's a really, really an awesome guy. He moved into that position after Ducey went from treasurer to governor. And even since before then, he was one of my best Twitter friends. And we'd have a lot of fun talking about stuff like the State Land Trust, and other things that you see down here. More so, I think, in Pima County than down here in Cochise County, but even in Sierra Vista outskirts, you're gonna see these State Land Trust things. And there was a big disagreement between Ducey and DeWitt over how that money would be used, converted into education. So, I love both those guys, but yeah, it's not personal, it's just policy. Actually, I saw it with DeWitt on that one. But, you know, Jeff knows that... I love the guy, devout Jew, one of my older brothers in belief. It's not about his job. I don't like the guy because, "Oh, he's the state treasurer." No, I like the guy because he's Jeff DeWitt, and that's why, that's what people see in me when I talk to him. They know that I'm out there to, you know, shake down the system and send fake lobbyists to put boobs up in their chest, stuff like, up on their face, stuff like that. No, I mean, this is the real thing. I mean, this is who I am, and this is why I have so many well-grounded connections. Is, they all know that I like these people for who they are. So Jeff was on Twitter with me before he became treasurer, and now that he's moving to NASA, and going to DC, and, you know, working as a bigwig there, he'll still be my Twitter friend, and guess what? After administrations change, and they fire the guy, and he gets canned, and, you know, ends up in the Hill newspaper over something stupid, or, you know, unfair, or untrue, or maybe even true, who knows? But, you know, he'll know, I'll still be there with him, and he'll be Jeff DeWitt me, not whatever, you know, rule he has. And people over the years know that's who I am. Even my astronaut friend on Facebook, she knows. I loved, I went and saw, you know, both of her launches, and saw one of her landings. She got a standing ovation by the group YouTube when she was in orbit. But she knows, that's not why I like her. I like her because I knew her in Clearwater, and she's just awesome. And so, and, you know, we're always, you know, chatting and stuff, even to this day. So people know that's who I am. So, but you ask me who impresses me? I'll have to tell you, who impresses me is that little 18-year-old girl that's in hospice, that's in a wheelchair. I call her my baby angel, Jazz. This girl knows that she's dying of Huntington's disease. She's facing it bravely. She's, as far as I know, not getting bummed out about it at all. She doesn't have a worry in the sky. Her family is certainly under a lot of stress. There's a whole lot of medical issues, and social issues, and that kind of thing. I really loved the Pope last year doing an audience just for Huntington's disease people and their patients, because it really is a poorly misunderstood disease. And there's kind of a long story behind it, but somehow I got involved with this HDSA charity. It's the Huntington's Disease Society of America. I don't have anybody in my family who has it, but I have learned to understand it very well, and know very well the people who do. So, that's why I've really adopted that, but it's my pet charity. And it's where all the salaries going, if I am elected. But don't worry about that as being a concern. God will provide, no matter what happens to me, for these kids. But yeah, they, what happens is, they brag about, "Oh, we raised $20,000 this year", but what they don't tell you is, "Okay, sure, that's for like a dozen families that had to split it up over a 12-month period, so what's that come out to really?" These guys really need so much more help. And so this is just, even this money I'm giving, if successfully elected, is just to drop it in the bucket to what these families really, really need. But my baby angel, Jazz, I wanna tell you something. I learned this with ALS even before, is they are like four-leaf clovers. You know, we think normal is the three-leaf clover, and anytime we see a four-leaf clover, we're like, "Wow, this is really special." As a matter of fact, a lot of people would much rather find a four-leaf clover than a three-leaf clover. That's just how it works. Why doesn't it work the same with people? I don't know. Because I can tell you right now, my four-leaf clover is these kids with Huntington's disease. And it's called JHD, Juvenile Huntington's Disease, even though technically Jasmine is 18 now, and in hospice, ironically enough. She's, you know, she does the normal thing. She likes to watch TV, and listen to Bieber, you know, Justin Bieber, and freak... She likes to watch TV and listen to Bieber, you know, Justin Bieber and freak out over Justin Timberlake and all, all the, all the- Time for part two, guys. So, when we left off, I was telling you about Jasmine, the, the girl in hospice at 18. She's my baby, baby angel, Jazz. I was actually in ICU in, I guess it'd be 2016, from right after Thanksgiving to right before Christmas. And that was for a really bad case of cancer. So, I'd done the chemo and the radiation, all that kind of stuff. Believe me, that, I got a lot of endurance. I mean, I went through the Navy SERE School, which is the Survival Training School that you hear all about in the news today, and that the SEALs go through as well. I mean, I, I've been, I've been really well-trained, including my ex-wife, I love her, I'm just kidding, to, to do, to endure a lot. So, don't, don't be scared to, to know that there's two things. Number one, I've, I, I've seen it all, I can take it all. And the second thing is, some people who've been through what I've been through have a tendency to be, to, to lose their empathy for those who maybe, maybe have a, have a softer shell. That's not me either. So, I, I, I'm, I'm still a very kind and loving person, and I understand when you talk to people and they're in a bad mood, maybe their mother just died, or maybe their dog is sick, or, you know, there's always things that make people what they are. So, I, I don't, I don't judge people by my standards. But I still was really tempted to get really bummed out about having the cancer, you know, and hope, the hopelessness of, "Oh, my God, I'm never going to be the same again," which for the most part is true. But I did, that, when I, when I got out of there right, right before Christmas in 2016, they had thought I'd be on a walker and on oxygen for the rest of my life. I really did. Somehow, I made a really miraculous recovery. I was working at a great place down in Tucson. They happened to be the, the place that does the building for Northwest and Oral Valley Hospitals, and I, I'd worked for a group, working with TFC before that out of Tucson, even when I was living here. But by March of 2017, it just wasn't working out, and that's when I decided to go local. You guys may remember me from the Dollar Tree or from Target stocking cars just to, just to get by and get out of the house. Then I worked for Teleperformance, which I was really pretty good at, but it just wasn't going to work out, because I, I have the same situation I would have at City Council, is there's some days I can work just fine, there's some days you can't. And you name one employer on our, on Earth, it's just going to say, "Well, just come to work whenever you, you want to." No, they, they need their schedules filled, and, and everybody knows that, you know, realistically, I really just couldn't work anymore, so I did apply for disability. Some days I was so bad, I'd go two or three days, I couldn't even get out of bed. So, just a chronic illness related to the, to the, to the sickness, the cancer follow-up, with, with some complications as well. As of right now, it looks like the cancer has been cleared based on the last CAT scan. Inconclusive is good enough for me in some areas. I did have a case of severe malnutrition, severe osteoporosis and severe dehydration. So, one day I got so bad, just last week, that I had to go down to Father Greg, and I'm like, "Dude, this is it." He, he kind of like, you know, set me straight on some things I was saying that maybe were interpreted incorrectly. But, yeah, it was like, you know, the, the, the point is this, we don't decide when we die, but we always have to be ready for that day when you're driving down the street and you get T-boned by the, the dump truck or things like that. And just that day I was there, right here on the, the bypass right to the right of me, there was a head-on collision, somebody was over center and ran into a truck that didn't stop, and he's like, "What's this guy doing?" And the guy runs right to the truck, and next thing you know, the guy's dead. It's happening all the time around here, guys. So, you just never know. What I can tell you is the person that inspired me to actually have a very good attitude about all of this was my baby angel, Jazz. She has so much joy and enthusiasm that really, I have no excuse to feel sorry for myself, honestly. I lived 55 great years. I have seen 38 out of 135 space shuttle launches. I actually know many of the astronauts personally. Just over the last couple of years, I've been the last one to interview many before, right before they died, including like Captain Paul Whites. He was on Skylab and the first shuttle Challenger flight. Scott Carpenter, one of the Mercury astronauts. I, I was like the fir-, the, the last one to get to interview these people. Interviewed many others who have died since then, Jane Cernan. I'm really kind of a space nerd, not a space geek, but a space nerd. My friend Amy Titel will tell you all, or Title will tell you all about that. She, she runs a site called AST Vintage Space. So, I have a lot of hobbies to keep me busy, but I really need to just really get involved in something real. Get off the internet, get out here, get involved with the real people, their real problems, their real concerns, their real joys, their real laughters, their real sorrows. Don't, don't depend on Facebook, because I have actually missed weddings and funerals because my feed doesn't work right, and by the time I see it, the funeral's over with. Or the wedding's over with, and they're already, the honeymoon's over with, or the burial is over with. It's just a, you, you can't live that, 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 that internet life. You have to actually get out and enjoy the real thing, which I do, which is part of the reason why I get out and just film so much of this great, awesome place. Here, here we're going into a place that's not really, I'm, I'm not sure if it's really incorporated or not. There is a place down here, I've, I, I know the director pretty well. She, she's converted into Catholicism, and it's called the Good Neighbor Alliance, and she's really one of the people I really, really, really want to personally work very closely with to see what we can do to solve some of these other problems we're having in this town. The trailers are not the problem, and the people are not the problem. I think the situation is the problem. We just need to, we just need to find out how to make, how to, how to fix the broken cogs and get these people back on track. But joy, the joy and enthusiasm in Jazz is what really, really, really drives me. You just can't feel sorry as the 55-year-old guy who's been to every country on Earth except for South America and Antarctica. You really can't look back and say, you know, you didn't have a great life. Right before I went into chemo, I did a duo with Kiss. That was one of my favorite groups growing up. I've been to the Star Trek set many times with, with Paramount Pictures. I've met all those actors, really had a good time meeting Shatner a couple of years ago. Lee Majors and Lindsay Wagner, all, all these different people I've met. And Roma Downey has a really awesome book out now. She's an old friend, one of the seven Catholics in, in a Sierra Vista, I'm sorry, Salt Lake City. So, she was always easy to spot, when she was filming Touch by an Angel up there. And when I knew her, she was pregnant, I think during the, the second season, and she was having her, her daughter Riley not long after that. She, she had the whole season pregnant with this girl, and she's already like, already out of, out of, you know, out of high school and college, and she's out there living on her own and doing well. So, just amazing how, how fast time flies, but she's still looking great. She's right, today she's done in Houston, working with that Joel Osteen-area church to sell her book, Box of Butterflies. But every, I've known her for years, and everything about that woman just amazes the hell out of me. And so, when the Weinstein, I got my own Weinstein story to tell you, but when, when the Weinstein stuff was, Weinstein stuff was going on and everybody started dumping on Hollywood, I kept saying, "No." Dick Van Dyke, Roma Downey, there, there are good people there. Okay, so Roma isn't actually in Hollywood, she's actually out in Malibu. But there are good people in the area. There are good people, including the group that worked Person of Interest in all of the Dark Knight films. They also did this Churchill movie that just came out, which is actually well-received and I guess along the same production line. But there are good people in Hollywood. My, my old friend Doug Arbansky works that one. You never see him in, in the credits, but believe me, he's there. He's, 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 he's the one pulling the strings on, on those movies. But it's not like I don't know people or I can't make things happen for this town. It's that I can't do it from the West End in a house. I, I have to get involved, get back to, to the community. Use, it, it's, it does, it doesn't make any sense to have tools, but not know how to use them. And so, my thing is, I have the tools, I'm going to use them, I'm going to use them well. I'm going to make things happen, guys. I, I'm serious. I have, I have always been kind of a visionary as far as, okay, I'm not a should, I'm not a should-as-in-person. I'm like, "Well, it should be this way, because this should actually be 2.5 feet wide, so a wheelchair can get on it." It's the median I'm on right now at Seventh and, and Frye, and it's only, it looks like it's only two feet wide, so a wheelchair couldn't go down the thing. That, that kind of thing, we can work around stupid stuff like ADA compliance, stuff like that in the town. But, you know, we don't need to have all the stuff you normally see directed by the immediate agenda on things that are important to our priorities here to making this place work. Senseless proclamations bore the hell out of me. I really do. But let's just use our time wisely. It is limited time, even for me, especially for Jazz. Make the most out of life. If, if you see a chance, now take it. It's one of my favorite songs, Steve Winwood. Let's do it. All right, guys? Thanks very much for watching. We're going to close this down now, and if you have any more questions, once again, 520-848-7794. You can email me, I'm at, I think, I don't want to give you the wrong one for my campaign email, but you could always use my personal email, realjohnsullivan@gmail.com. And I will also, as I said, have a YouTube campaign page up very soon. So, look forward, look forward to that as well. I just had a really good talk with my, with my next-door neighbor. I told her what this was all about, and she, she just laughed, and she's like, "I don't blame you," you know? She, she knows I just don't want to sit at home and watch the, the silly fans spin waiting for my disability to come through. I really just kind of get involved, get out, and use the tools that I have to the good service of all. Once again, I'm donating all sal, all salaries to charity. That's really a non-starter on whether you should vote for me or not, because God will provide for these kids, whether I'm giving to them or somebody else is. And it, it will happen either way. There's no reliance, dependence on me either way. But you guys have given me so much. You give me Navy retirement to live on for doing no work at all. I could, I consider it deferred pay myself. So, you give me Navy retirement, which is awesome. And so, that's all coming out of your paycheck. So, I, I really, really appreciate that. So, really, I, I really can't ask anything more out of your paycheck to support me. So, I'm doing this pro bono, pro se, and like I said before, you're, it's going to be a campaign like you've never seen before, believe me, guys. You, you will not believe this one. I don't need this endorsement of the Herald Editorial Board or the Star Editorial Board or the Republic Editorial Board. I don't really give a rat's ass, believe it or not. I really don't. I, I, I know, like I said before, I've worked, I've worked the media since 1992 professionally and freelance. I know exactly how, how the system works. These people, I, they're all good people. Yvonne, Yvonne Wigan Sanchez, Betty, Becky Pollak, all these people I, I know are really good people. But it's a business, it, it's a business model. They have to make ins meet, they have fans to feed. They got to get the hits on the webpage, they got to get the sales for the paper. I understand what drives how, how, how they think and how they work. I still don't know why the Star endorsed Hillary, but you know, not the Star, Welsh, they always do, but the Republic, that was really kind of a dumb move. It's not about the people, it's, it's about the policy, it's about the procedures. But I know how things work behind the scenes, and I know what makes things tick. And so, that work, that's what's really going to make me so awesome for this job. So, I do ask for your consideration, I ask for your endorsement, I ask for no campaign cash at all. I do not want any, I don't, I don't want any donations. I will hang up on lobbyists, I've already hung up on three of them. We're not going to do this the old-fashioned, shot-noble way, we're going to do this the John Sullivan way. It's going to be a campaign like you've never seen before and probably will never see again until it's time for me to run for reelection. God bless you, guys. Thanks very, very much for watching. And look at this wonderful place. Really, who would not want to be, if so inclined with time and talent, want to serve this awesome community? All right, guys? Thanks. God bless you, guys. Have a great day. What you see is what you get, so it's going to be a lot of fun, and I hope, I hope you come along for the ride and have fun with me. God bless, and I'm John Sullivan, and I approve this message.